Go ahead and open up our September 5th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Welcome, everybody. The first item on the agenda is the approval from our August meeting minutes. Does anybody have any changes that need to be made? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move we accept the motion as presented.
I have a motion to approve as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed say nay. Right, motion passes unanimously. I am going to recuse myself on item B. The PUD for the legends at Point Clear, I own a rental house that's contiguous to that property to the north. Don't have any real strong feelings for or against it, but feel like I need to recuse myself. So, just a slight change in the agenda. We don't have much to do on C, so I'm gonna let Hunter tell us the updates on the zoning that he's thinking about first, and then we'll go through the agenda, and then I will recuse myself for item B. But first of all, Hunter, if you'd like to do C, and then we'll go right on into the old and new business.
And this, that C, if y'all recall, last month, we talked about some parking requirements, imposed zoning amendments. Since then, we have, well, one item we've done is went to a parking authority meeting and appreciate Commissioner Warsham joining us there. And we heard, and agreed with a lot of the feedback. So, the ad hoc committee that this creation formed eighteen months ago, approximately, the parking authority has got their feet on now, the members are back and were able to have quorums and meetings. They are going to appoint a couple of members, and at least my request is that we revive that ad hoc committee with some members of this commission, the parking authority, potentially the Board of Adjustments, and even some owners, maybe property owners or stakeholders downtown. And what I'll ask you to do, and we'll put it, we'll just table the zoning case amendment till further notice, just so that it's not floating out there every month on an agenda. And we'll advertise again properly if we bring that back in that form or some other form in the future.
It seems like everybody says we need a new parking garage, but then nobody parks on the old parking garage. So, people want to park right in front of the business. But for everybody in the audience, please use the parking garage and think of how far you walk at Lowe's or at Walmart. I looked across Lowe's today, and I thought Lowe's is as wide as from my office to right here. So, if you can walk in Lowe's and walk in Walmart, you can walk around beautiful downtown Fairhope and enjoy our flowers and our trees.
Absolutely. And we are putting, we've already started that study Wednesday. We went out just section, or Fairhope Avenue from Bancroft to Church Street. Fifty-seven cars were parked there pretty much all day. The parking deck, what you could see from a drone, had most two cars parked there during that same timeframe, 7:00 AM, 10:30 and 2:30 PM. So, yeah, there's a utilization problem, but there's also other long-range things we need to consider as well.
Sure. Good. Thank you.
Just for the record, can the planning commission make the motion and table that, just so it's clear that that's gonna be tabled off the agenda for?
That's no problem. Do I have a motion to table ZC 2408?
I move we table ZC 2408.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
That would just be until staff revisits, bringing it back before the planning commission?
Sure. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed say nay.
And Mr. Chairman, just a little bit more housekeeping. Rebecca Bryan is our co-chair. She's not here tonight, so as you recuse yourself, we do need to nominate a chair position to handle that case.
All right.
Commissioner Warsham has done a great job in the future, but I have no bias in the past.
All right. Would somebody like to make a motion to elect anybody as the chair to take my place? Mr. Warsham is willing, or anybody else you'd like to?
I make a motion that we elect someone as Lee, our president, recuses himself.
You need a name that said somebody.
Oh, Warsham.
All right. Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed say nay. All right. That passed unanimously. I thought we might have one vote against that, but thank you. All right. Under old and new business, Greenfield subdivision, we have a request for a one-year preliminary plat extension. We have not done an extension on this before, have we?
We did. We did a short one to get some clarification on some utilities and some other things. They did get that clarification. We had a pre-construction meeting two weeks ago, three weeks ago, so they are under construction. We support the extension.
Okay.
It was not the typical long extension, and we gave it just enough time to clarify some things.
Normally, we do the first one, and in this case, we're usually pretty much carte blanche on the first one. So, anybody want to make a motion for a one-year extension on Greenfield subdivision?
I'll make a motion for extension.
All right. I've got a motion for up to one-year extension for Greenfield subdivision. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed say nay. We have also a request for FST Audi, Inc. of Alabama for an additional one-year extension for preliminary approval of Audi subdivision five unit multiple occupancy project.
We have given an extension on this one, but as you know, the Audi and the ponds and all the infrastructure is approved. Basically, what happened here, this was during the two jurisdictional, and there was two approvals, and a plat did not get recorded properly. And they're working through that options to how to resolve that. So, this is kind of a paperwork administration, extension that we do support.
And this, I mean, not that this shouldn't have any bearing one way or the other, but this is not Audi, is it? It's just another developer?
It's Audi.
What is Audi doing?
It is the Audi store and the adjacent. The intent was to create two lots, and a plat was recorded without the county engineering signature, and then a lot was transferred.
Okay.
So, there's just clearing some paperwork, really nothing, not much to do with us as the city of Fairhope.
Sure.
We are gonna, we're meeting with the county and everybody involved in figuring out how to resolve this.
Reason, I just didn't remember the Audi being a five-unit property, but that's because that's been some time ago.
Right.
All right. Good deal. Anybody willing to make a motion to grant a one-year extension on FST Audi, Inc. for a one-year extension?
I move we grant a one-year extension for SD 21.41 Audi subdivision.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, just one more under old and new business, real quick. I want to make sure everybody knows the schedule. We did get a draft comprehensive plan. It's presented at the council work session. It's available on our website. We do plan to have that on the agenda next month. So, please, commissioners especially, but anybody in the public, if you have any review comments, anything else, easiest way, if it's bulky, you can send an email to planning@fairhelpal.gov. We can take those into consideration on amendments. With the restore deadlines, we don't have major, a lot of major time to make big edits, but it is a living document. So, if you see any concerns, even after we hopefully approve, we can tweak those if needed.
Yeah. And please do, commissioners, that was on, it was, what was the date that, was it Monday before last it was on the city work session?
Yes.
Please go watch that. If you didn't attend it, please go watch that on the city work session. You know, I've been on this board for twenty-five years now, and we get a lot of grief for what we do, but ninety percent of what we do, we don't have any choice about. It's due to the regulations and the subdivision regs, the ordinances that we have. So, a lot of people like to come and, excuse the French, but bitch at what we do, but then it's crickets whenever you have the comprehensive plan being met out there. So, engineers out in the audience, please wake up, engineers in the audience, and please look at the comprehensive plan. And y'all, when we did the LID items, the engineers helped us with more on that than I think anything else we've done, and made a lot of really good ideas, and I think we have one of the best LID ordinances that there is. But overall, please look at that and read it, and, you know, it's nice to have a good plan for a good direction, because that's what controls what we do up here. We can't just be arbitrary and capricious. We have to follow the rules and the regulations that are set for us. So, please do look at that and study that.
Thanks.
All right. First item on the agenda, or next item on the agenda, depending on how you look at it. Rockwell Place, 2419. This is a public hearing to request a Sawgrass application for Rockwell LLC for a preliminary plat approval of a re-subdivision of Lot 1 in Rockwell Place, a ten-lot major subdivision. Yes, sir?
Yes, sir?
Do you want to make sure if anyone's here for that, they know the map that was attached to the letter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good. So, I'm Mike Jeffries with the city. Wanted to let anybody know that was here or that did receive a letter. The site plan that was attached with our notification, we attach a site plan associated with it. That site plan was in error. It was actually the site plan for the zoning case that we will see after this case. So, the plat that was attached to that map was in error. Everything else for that notification was correct. That had the date and time and location for the meeting this evening. Just wanted to make sure that in case anybody was wondering, that site plan is not what we are looking at for preliminary approval right now for this case. That will be for the next case. But as you said, this is a preliminary plat for a ten-lot major subdivision. You guys have seen this property in one sense or another over the last handful of months and couple of years, one side of the development. As you see on the screen, is where the Rockwell apartments are being completed. We had a two-lot major subdivision that created the road, which is Bushel Drive through the center, with all the utilities, street trees, sidewalks, detention areas that were required. On the left is our zoning map, and this property recently did annex in as B2. On the screen is the site plan. I'm gonna go over just a few key points of what you can see on this plat. The encounter development that is just to the south of this did something similar. So, Rockwell is following with the access points. You'll notice that between lots one and two, three and four, five and six, seven and eight, there is a shared access driveway to eliminate unnecessary and duplicate access points along Bushel Drive to eliminate the number of those. There is also kind of unique with this property, for the drainage, which will be constructed if preliminary plat is approved, is some shallow drainage for each lot that will contain the water for the individual businesses that may come into the future. So, it's a master drainage plan. So, when these lots come in to develop, that owner, the new owner of that lot or developer can come in, know where their water needs to go, and that their water has already been accounted for in the overall drainage plan, and not have to provide an additional retention detention area that may be a different pond in front of each individual lot. So, these are going to be a shallowed drainage area that most of the time will remain dry, walkable, usable, that'll only be filled with water in events of rain. On the screen is a recent aerial, Highway 81. It's at the top of the screen. North is to the right. Outlined in pink is the subject property. Below that is the apartments I was referencing that are currently under construction and nearing completion, and I suspect we will see a final application for that in the future as well. As I said, this is a re-subdivision, and all the infrastructure was already put in and exists along Bushel Drive. Couple of other key points is there is a multi-use path has been constructed along Highway 181 that contains an asphalt path along with landscaping that connects to the multi-use path to the encounter development. The way that this development coordinates with the south into the north is that there be a multi-use path or a version of it connecting with the streets and sidewalks to get from the intersection of Highway 181 and 104, north all the way through the Harvest Green East development. And if development continues to the north, hopefully that connection and that pathway will be continued on some, similar to the multi-use path that we have along Greeno Road. The portion of sidewalk will need to be installed along the northern property line to connect to the use path along Highway 181 that will connect to the existing sidewalk on Bushel Drive. As I've mentioned, the drainage is being master planned. The drainage has been reviewed and meets the subdivision regulations. I mentioned the access points limiting the number of road cuts allowed on Bushel Drive. The green space is provided in that thirty-foot greenway along 181 with that multi-use path and landscaping. We will need a revised landscape, needs to be submitted, incorporating landscaping around the detention areas along Bushel Drive. For reference, here is the green space plan. I want to call out the portion in red. That is a portion of sidewalk that goes in between Lot Number 10 and the detention area or common area of Number 2 that is there. None of that is counted in their green space calculations, but that will be portion of sidewalk installed that connects the sidewalk along Bushel Drive to get to 181. Another requirement of this is there was a pedestrian sidewalk that was going through some common area in Harvest Green East. These yellow lines indicate where the future sidewalk will go. They're not exact, but the overhead can't see where that sidewalk ends. It should terminate at the property line, but a connection to that point will be required as well to help enforce our connectivity with the developments as they come in line. With that, staff recommends conditional approval of SD 24.1 Rockwell Place subdivision, subject to the following condition, is review and approval of a revised landscape plan. And I'm happy to answer questions on behalf of staff, and we have the developer with us tonight that can answer questions with them, and I believe Tim Lolly with Sawgrass Consulting is with us as well to answer on behalf of the engineer.
All right. Are there any questions for staff at this time? I've got a couple.
Yes, sir.
There are no connections to 181 on this directly, correct?
That is, currently, there is not. So, go in, and I'll go back to the plat to help, where you can see it on this green space plan. Current, there is a note on the plat that restricts access to Bushel Drive only for lots one through seven, which allows a future connection Lot 8 or 9 without approval to connect to Highway 181. Otherwise, all the other connections will be an internal connection off of Bushel Drive. Lot 2 and 3, 4, 7 cannot access their lot via Highway 181.
Okay. And so, I guess it'll just be, these will probably hopefully be double-sided buildings. Some of them, is there a requirement on that?
These will all come through site plan review before any building permit is released and come back before this board and city council for a site plan approval. That will look at some, can look at some of those details.
And it's there on the drainage, looks like they're gonna be swells on these private lots. Some of them look like they go across the lot lines. Are those gonna be memorialized anyway, like?
That'll be incorporated when they come back for a final plat. Well, inside of the O and M plan, they get signed and recorded. The maintenance agreement for all of this detention area will be memorialized in a sense in that O and M plan for them to stay as they are. And they will be constructed prior, that's the moving.
If somebody wanted to just fill a swell up later and just put a rose garden there, would they have that opportunity?
They would not. No, sir.
That's all my questions. Anybody else have any questions for staff at this time? All right.
Just if they were gonna be dry ponds, if they were dry or wet, they're wet, because they're steep.
That's the main feature, is that it will be, it will be dry except for when it rains, and then after that, and the engineer can speak to that a little more clearly on the time that it may be holding water, but for the typical day, there's not gonna be standing water in there and say, it's going to detain it and then release it.
Do we require like additional vegetation that's not like a hole in the ground, like, you know, some good rain garden vegetation in these dry swells?
Well, if it's dry, it's, depending on how it was designed, it can be a rain garden that's going to hold water, or if it's a vegetated wetland area, then you can add wetland plants to it. It all depends on the LID technique of how it's created.
I'm just visualizing these grass, you know, ditches that just sit there that aren't really.
And to be clear on what the landscape plans are for, is to show us the landscape plans. You can, some of those, you can plant even trees like cypress and wet feed, and, you know, so that is, and our tree ordinance does have a section of plants that work in those environments. So, that's, I think, wetland plants, but depending on how wet it is, but the revised landscape plan is what we're looking for. That currently, as we're proposing, is reviewed before any permit. So, if y'all have an alternate review procedure that you recommend on that, we certainly, we can, we will reach out if requested. You'll have to make a condition to the tree committee and let them kind of look at that landscape plan as well.
You know, there's some, Thomas Hospital on Greeno Road has some dry ponds that a lot of people don't notice, which is kind of, means they were done well. And I think some of the most attractive dry ponds are on County Road 13 on the east side of the soccer fields, where they have cypress trees and cattails and those areas, and then they might hold water for a day, but apparently, they stay damp enough to keep the cattails alive, and that's, you know, a great LID technique, so.
And unless they've removed them, the pond, the kind of dry pond to the north is full of cattails, I believe.
Yeah.
Still?
Common area too.
Yeah. So, that's the existing one that's there now.
All right. Any more questions for staff? All right. Thank you, Mike. Tim, do you have anything to add at this time, or do you want me to open the public hearing first and?
You have the public hearing first.
Okay. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. This is for Rockwell Place. It's just right up at the Highway 104, 181 intersection, ten-lot subdivision. Does anybody have any questions, concerns about it? This is the time, if you do. All right. In that case, I'll go ahead and open the public, close the public hearing. Tim, do you have anything to add, or are you?
Tim Lolly with Sawgrass Engineering. I would like to clarify on the ponds. We've tried and been working with the city. A lot of the unsightly ponds that you see have a three-to-one slope, and I know that may not mean a whole lot to everybody up here, but that means for every three feet you come over, you come up one foot in elevation. We've laid these back to five-to-one, so they're more gentle slopes that should be walkable when they're dry. We've also graded the bottoms of the ponds to drain from the edges to the outfall structures so that it's not completely flat, where it won't turn into a soggy mess, and hopefully will stay dry. And so, you know, obviously, we're cognizant of the fact that these are, you know, on the front side of all these potential future businesses, and we want this area to look nice. And so, you know, we could've crammed them in smaller and done steeper slopes and that kind of stuff. So, we're trying to work a solution that works for everybody. And then as far as the landscape plan, I would like a little clarification if we're just asking for a plan at this time, or if this landscaping needs to be installed. And the reason we're asking that question is, you know, when these lots are developed, obviously, the rest of the lot's gonna be landscaped, irrigated, and all that, and what we're trying to avoid is having the owner irrigating private lot at this point in time and the kind of mess that that situation makes. And, you know, we're not opposed to doing a landscape plan, but we would prefer to let that be installed at the time of site development and irrigated at the time of site development.
Mike, what is your thought on that? What was your?
So, with that, I definitely can see the concerns on the developer's side of planting something and not having irrigation and it coming out to die. I do not support having each individual owner come in with their own individual landscape plan to decide how they want to design that, where you have a palm tree, tropical oasis on one side, then a cypress trees on the other side, and it not being cohesive. Part of wanting the overall drainage plan and knowing what that was going to look like on the front end was knowing what the finished product was going to be. Having during site plan review and approved landscape plan, that is, they're required to follow at time of planting, that is an option. Some of the downfall with that is if two or three of these lots sit empty for five or six years, ten years. Hopefully, they don't, but if they do sit empty, there's gonna be those gaps in the landscaping, and you end up with half a pond that's been landscaped and the other half that has not been landscaped for five years of growth here with a newly planted growth of whatever that landscape material is. Or kind of my thoughts on that idea, yes, there's two sides to that and what the best course of action is. We don't do a performance bonds anymore for the street trees or for that, except for, you know, unique circumstances. So, I don't know, it's not really another path that I want to go down again of trying to hold that performance bond for this particular case either. So, that's, is really a tough decision on which way to go with the landscaping.
I would think, and Paul Fineho down there is a landscape architect, so let me talk like I'm a landscape architect, and then Paul, you tell me where I'm wrong and correct me. But I would think it'd be very difficult to not landscape the swells and the, you know, and the drainage part from the beginning. You know, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I mean, you know, kind of like Michael, you know, Mike's talking about, you have half a swell landscaped, half's not landscaped. I mean, it seems like you might, I mean, if those are, it seems like they should be landscaped when they're built. Maybe you could always water them, you know, from one side or the other. Water's not that expensive, and you just have to really water them the first year. What are your thoughts?
There's irrigation there. I mean, the street trees are irrigated that were installed?
That's correct. It's just I don't think we have the capacity on the, you know, we, the line that was the. You know, the irrigation line that's running down Bushel now is just to irrigate that twelve-foot piece of right-of-way outside the curb, and then, you know, we're adding sixty, seventy feet, you know, so it's almost ten times the area. So, you know, you'd be quite a demand on your, you know, increasing demand on your irrigation capacity.
Yeah. My only concern with that, though, and I understand what you're saying, my concern with that is when you drive through Quell Creek and you still see sections that you're missing a sidewalk, you know, back when we required that the sidewalks be built when the house is built, and we're nice to developers, and, you know, you've got areas with lots thirty-five years old that, you know, where people have to, and I don't think it's safe. I wish we'd change in ordinance that if you have a lot that's more than X years old, you have to put a sidewalk in front of it if you're holding it for an investment, because it's not safe that kids ride on sidewalks and then jump their bikes into the streets and go back on the sidewalks. But I think that's another point, is what if, you know, one of those lots isn't developed for ten, fifteen years?
Yeah. Well, I mean.
What's your thought on it, Paul?
Yeah, I don't see how it could be consistent, like Mike is saying, without it, you know, going in at the same time and being, yeah, just, I think that would be the best option and have the best look and overall performance.
I'm gonna date myself, but I'm looking at where Del Shamps used to be is the old, is the Piggly Wiggly, and we look at that, that tree line and how that was developed with the sidewalks and how that buffers the development. And that was put in with, before the development with the sidewalk, and then they finished the rest of the landscape as the development went through, and now we have mature, beautiful landscape that's put in. So, I, you know, I feel like if we could at least work on the buffer and the front, then, you know, the individual landscape with the build-out could be a separate phase.
And I think you saw that. I mean, Greeno Road, the kind of business office subdivision there, same or lots, there's kind of drainage swells in front. A lot of that was put in, and then the, as the lot further developed for each tenant, they did the landscaping kind of behind that. So, there's, I mean, I think that's the right answer. We could, I don't, I don't want to do this, I'm not proposing, if it's about property ownership, we could put it all in a, in a common area, all the drainage in a common area.
I mean, my thought is, is that, you know, we're allowing the developer to get around having a, I don't mean around in a negative way, but, you know, normally, these water retention, you know, facilities are in a, are in an owners association or POA.
Well, and they will be. And the whole reason, you know, originally, the plan was for no detention, for the individual property owners to construct detention on their lot when they built, and at the request of planning department, they wanted us to bring ponds in, and there were some conversations about incorporating green space in there, and that's why you don't see the green space there, because we didn't intend to landscape these areas at this point. We were trying to work with the city on, you know, providing this master detention scheme on the front end, when it's, you know, it's not uncommon for a development, a commercial development, to have detention left up to the individual property owners. I mean, my office, where I work, Spanish Ford, we have our own detention pond that was built when we built our office. And so, that's not a uncommon. And so that's not a uncommon situation. And so, again, we, you know, we're, we're trying to meet everybody in the middle and get as close as we can.
I understand. All right. Any more questions for Tim at this time? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Yes, sir. All right. Any more questions for staff? If not, I'll, we're discussion. I think we probably ought to require the landscape and the drainage portion. I don't see how.
If you're driving, I mean, that's the first thing you see. You're driving, you know.
Right. That could be a part of the motion. The staff recommendation states review and approval of revised landscape plan.
And, and let me just ask a point of clarification. And Paul, I'm kind of looking into, the tree ordinance has certain requirements, perimeter plantings and, and screens from parking lots. I don't think we have to require those. Those can be as the tenant build out, but because we have the drainage on lots, we, we're just talking about the kind of embankment plantings, you know, around the banks and, you know, in the swells, not everything within that easement and perimeter.
Right. Yeah. I would think it would be associated with these swells that, you know, stabilize them and kind of have that consistent character all the way along. And then that could be, like, if there's some suggestions in the, when, when it goes for plant, plan review of the individual landscape plans, you know, say they want to maybe alter or change, you know, add to what the swell was originally planted in, you know, that would be part of the review as well. So, you know, these, these swells, you know, if that, if this was done in, which I would assume, you know, native type plants, wet, you know, wetland or marginal type plants, you know, that, they only require a temporary irrigation system. So it's not an irrigation system that has to be under the ground. A lot of times you'll see this, especially on the beach where they're establishing sea oats as they just anchor the pipe right on top of the ground and use big heads and just use a few heads and that just gets them going the first couple of years. Then after that, that could be abandoned and then when the new owner comes in and develops his business, they put in the real irrigation system. And if they want to, you know, add whatever, cypress tree or this or that for the permit to, you know, to the area that's been landscaped with the swell, you know, that could happen and that could be part of their review plan then, you know.
I totally agree.
During the site plan review, we can look at those additions and supplemental or what a, what a tenant may be.
I totally agree. And I mean, and the, everything you read about those trees, it's best to not water them very often at all, but when you water them, just drown them. And then not water them for a while so that the roots go deep rather than water them every day a little bit and the roots bend back up toward the ground. You know, if you, if you drown them and they don't water them real often, they usually build pretty deep roots pretty well, pretty quickly, especially if they're in a sandy soil.
Yeah, because right by, right, I mean, I'm assuming there's going to be, you know, some kind of vehicular access or vehicular parking right behind these swells, which are going to require some screening for, for, you know, for the landscape ordinance. So I wouldn't think that any, that that would all come later.
Because I, I mean, the big fear and one of the main reasons we wanted to make sure this was kind of designed not just for the benefit of anybody looking at a lot, but as you know, if certain ponds come in, then it becomes, there's a section in the tree ordinance says, well, that kind of pond needs a fence and a screen and you kind of hide it. And that was not the, what we wanted to see as these frontage lots. And nobody, nobody did. I mean, nobody wants that as the end result.
All right. Any more questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I believe we approve EST 24.19, Rockwell Place subdivision, subject to the staff conditions.
Okay. Would that include, would the staff condition include the landscape of the ponds?
It, it states, the condition as proposed was only to submit a revised landscape plan. So there it is. If you want to amend or, what's the staff recommendation?
So, do you feel comfortable with that or do you think we need to put, including landscaping the?
I think with this quarter of the minutes, I'm comfortable with that unless.
Nope, Chris is not.
State what you want. With a new proposed landscape.
Subject to staff conditions of the landscape plan for the swells and water.
Okay.
Drainage system.
All right. I've got a motion to approve subject to staff recommendations and having these swells and water retention portions landscaped. Do I have a second?
No second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. Next item on the agenda, I believe that is, ZZ 2402. I am recusing myself from that, so thank you very much.
Good luck, John. Chair. Are you presenting this?
I am. So if you want to introduce the agenda item.
This is.
Item B.
Yeah, I'm getting to, I have my mouse tied, so I think.
ZZ 2402.
ZZ 24402, public hearing to consider the request of the applicant, S. Core USA LLC, acting on behalf of the owner, Stephen W. Corbett, to rezone property from B2 general business district to PUD. Plan development to be known as Legends at Point Clear.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, and then I will lean on Michelle at the end of the table over there. This was a tag team, it's a large project, so it was, we both kind of chipped in on this review. So if there's any questions or if I misspeak, please correct me, throw things, whatever you need to do. This is a request. There are currently two parcels on the property of 13.3 acres. This was annexed into the city within the last year or two, not, in most recent time, and, and zone B2, which would allow commercial. And that would allow uses right now by right with a building permit for certain things like gas stations and storage and, and other items. So the request we have here is a zoning change to a PUD for everyone's sake. That locks in a site plan driven zoning for this particular property and doesn't rely on land use alone. So this is north to, just north of the existing public shopping center at Point Clear. There are eight buildings proposed, two commercial spacing Greeno, those total 12, 12,400 square feet and two mixed use buildings with 23 residential units and 16,000 square feet of commercial space with four multifamily buildings. We're a total of 131 proposed residential units and approaching 30,000 square feet of commercial space. The property is, you see on the left, that shows the zoning. You have to the north, county zoned property. Across Greeno Road is county zoned property. So for the audience, I want to make sure everyone understands the Fairhope zip code is not the Fairhope corporate limits and where we review. Anything happening to the north of this would go to Baldwin County Planning Commission for review. This is across the street wood, but on this map, anything in color is the city of Fairhope or otherwise known as the corporate limits. So the aerial you see on the right hand side of the screen, close to a, that's from the partial viewer, so that is close to current conditions. It is a wooded lot as it exists. The site plan, which is the, the driven plan is this, it's black and white, got a lot of information, so there's a kind of a prettier picture to, to get a visual of what's being proposed. You know, some of the, some of the positives, there's positives in, from a procedural standpoint. This is one of the first PUDs we've seen at this scale that is actually showing us what every building looks like. We have architectural plans. We're not just one site plan. There is each building elevations and, and that is a product, I think when this was first proposed, there was, it looked like a typical apartment complex. So this being a, an area, and I'm going to, I'm going to zoom real quick to this slide and come back. So dating back approximately 20 years, our comprehensive plan has talked about nodes and where the center of development should be. There are areas where we do want different housing types, the more denser housing types. And that should happen in the commercial, in an ideal world, and this long range plan should happen around these nodes. The public shopping center, as y'all know, we did have a jurisdiction then, was unzoned at the time. It was in the county. The, the subdivision didn't happen even coming through you until we got to the building, the building. So all that was done and as a part of our new comp plan, we are building on the previous comp plans and, and acknowledging that this is, this is a node now that whether we like it or not, there's traffic, there's that, it, we need to start planning for what that looks like instead of turning our back on it and saying, just don't do anything because things are going to happen. So let's plan for it. And, and the new comp plan would prescribe more things. One of the things in the matrix, it, it prescribes to amend our zoning ordinance, to give more support, design guidelines, things like that. We do not have that at the ti, at this time unless you are zoning to a village zoning district. We do not have any of those, but those were developed in 2005 and there are three of them. And it is exactly what we want to see around these notes. It is more of the mixed use housing types blended with commercial. And this project is taking components of, of that village concept as, as it was known in the comp plan. So, you know, essentially what you see is two one-story buildings with a plaza in the front and then wider sidewalks, I believe those are 15-foot sidewalks, you know, brick pavers. And these two buildings, and everybody can see my mouse, have commercial on the ground floor facing this way, the, to the east with one story of residential above that. And then courtyards as you move back, sidewalks, going back. And these are four buildings, apartment complexes. And then you get, I think one of the big questions we got from the neighbors, our neighbors to the west on Old Battles Village was what does that buffer look like? You know, how far away are the buildings? So there was a little, well, there was a lot, and I'm going to use this slide to show that. We've got a unique environmental feature back there. There is a blue line stream when you look at FEMA maps and those require buffers. They provided a, a environmental study on that, the applicant did, and there's no wetlands there. It is a stream bed, but it, it's such, it's eroded in places, it's filled in in places. And where we define a buffer with is based off the steam, the, the stream bank. There's no discernible stream bank and we really didn't know what to do. We did hire, the city hired a third party environmental review that confirmed. So what you see here and throughout this green space, this plan labels it as a drainage easement. It's actually a 100-foot stream buffer. That's a, a lot of limitations what you can do within that buffer. But as you can see, this is actually a three acre area, even a greater area until you get to the, the first buildings, if you will. So this is kind of an undisturbed area. There are limitations. You can put boardwalks and certain things within those areas, but that is the intent of that area and the buffer at Old Battles Village. And that's in addition to the 30-foot buffer that Old Battles Village had to provide when they developed adjacent to this property. So the uses here, the, for the commercial spaces, they have proposed and through early conversations, this is not the typical commercial lot with a gas station, express oil change, all of those things. So they've really restricted, self-restricted a lot of the uses and that list is on the, the screen of convenience stores and service stations and automobile repair. This is more the get, get out and, you know, restaurants, office space, things like that is the vision for those spaces. Green space, we do have a park, plaza and courtyards. In addition to this, there's landscape that, green space is a very specific thing in the table of the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations. There will be more landscape and street frontages provided, but this is the, the green space calculations. Connectivity and this is always a concern from neighbors, but, but going way back and then one of the biggest planning principles is there is connectivity amongst neighborhoods. It's a requirement. And when subdivisions develop and development happens, there's usually stub streets since we can't master plan the whole town at one time, there's stub streets provided. So Old Battles Village on the screen, you see Burnside, I believe it's Burnside Avenue? Burnside Street?
Street.
Street. Is it Avenue? Thank you. Is a stub street from Old Battles Village. The yellow arrow kind of shows where that ends. And when Old Battles Village was designed, that was intended to be connected to for a road. The environmental portion that we're dealing with on this property was not known at the time. So the only exceptions to that connectivity is when there are natural features we're trying to protect. So as we were reviewing that, this is something that we can support an exception to that connectivity so a road doesn't cut 100 feet through a, a wetland area. However, we do have other types of connectivity, sidewalks, biking, even low speed vehicles or golf carts, you know, that was a concern. There still should be. We think that's an added benefit. You know, very seldom is there two-way traffic there. There's, but, but everyone coming to, you know, from, in Old Battles Village that can come by bike, feet or, or golf cart or whatever to the restaurants, to the grocery store is reduced vehicles on our highways and coming out to Battles, to Greeno. That, that is a major component of not only every project we review, but our transportation planning in coordination with the county and ALDOT. That, that is a, something we're always concerned about. Roughly, the question was asked roughly, it differs depending on where you're at, but roughly the first building is proposed 275 feet away from that property line of Old Battles Village. There is a buffer that varies to the properties to the north, which are also zoned by the county as residential. That buffer is different widths. So we have three types of allowed buffers. Commissioner Fontenot, correct if I'm wrong, I believe that's a fence and a row of shrubs, two rows of shrubs that fall within 10 feet or a 20-feet kind of impenetrable buffer. So this, because, I think because of the entrance being pushed to the north as per ALDOT requirements, this buffer kind of changes from 10 feet to 30 feet to the properties to the north. There is no buffer from adjacent commercial property to commercial property. We actually want those to, to be connected. So that, that was minimal buffer around parking and all of that was provided on the south side of the property. I will kind of note here, it's just a visual on this screen, but this is the dash line. If you, if you go into Publix, the, everybody knows kind of the, where the dog park and those areas are. The, as proposed, there would be a required easement probably through the Publix property, which they have the ability to get. But essentially there would be a wider, not a five-foot sidewalk, but a wider trail that connects. And somewhere back in here, as this land drops off and you get into that stream buffer, it would be a boardwalk that would connect to Burnside. So that would be, in, in that environmental area, a little more sensitive with the elevated walkways. The, as I said, with the location, this is dependent on the kind of new comp plan as being a node. And I want to, for everyone that did not get the latest, when we put this out, I kind of got in a rush and blended some design guidelines we were proposing in the comp plan with our current regulations. So there's some minor adjustments. I speak in our staff report and what shows up on the slide about stories versus height. There's building height requirements within our current regulations. We are going to propose some about the, how many stories you can have of the building. But the end result is, I was, as you'll see, I'm kind of worried about some of the height of the buildings. And corrected that in the amended staff reports you received the following morning. Parking technically, and a PUD also for the Publix benefit. A PUD can have tweaks to the standard zoning that only affect this property. That's one of the benefits of a PUD, but it is done in trade-off of a new, unique project. So as opposed to this just getting R5 zoning that would have apartments all the way through it, the PUD allows that kind of mixed-use development in one project. So by its technical merits, this doesn't meet the parking requirements for some of the residential units, but we also acknowledge we like a shared parking model. We don't want sees of parking that sits empty until that one peak day of the year, whatever that might be. So as, we do support kind of the parking as required, street frontage or meeting, the architectural narrative. You know, there's a, what is provided within a PUD? Is it design guidelines or is it actual the building footprints? So these were designed, and we can see what those look like. On the screen are the elevations of the commercial buildings that would be closest to Greeno Road. This would, on the right-hand side, and you see a kind of a 3D rendering of what the frontage on the plaza side for those commercial buildings might look like. And on the right-hand side of the screen is the mixed-use two-story building with commercial below and residential units above in a two-story building. And then there are four buildings proposed that are apartment buildings that are, in this plan, and I'm gonna get too touch base in this, in this plan, it was 49 feet tall. I'm gonna bring up one point. For many years, building height was measured essentially at the front door to the top of a roof, and whatever the height limit was, 35 feet, 30 feet, that's what you had to meet. Seven, eight years ago, there was amendment to the zoning ordinance that allowed that to be measured from the natural elevation of the lot to the mean roof line. So even within our current, if you're just consider there's a flat lot, the building could be 39, 40 feet tall, and that's approximation. But as proposed, I believe it was 49 feet to the ridge line, and I can't read this right here. I'm gonna touch base with that. We did ask for kind of a cross-section, because I do think this is important, cross-section of the property. And from Greeno, you have a one-story, two-story to a three-story building, and then the bigger buffer. And what I think the applicant was doing is pushing that back because the land does fall off, so you really don't notice that height as much. However, we do have a regulation in place in those village districts that say the building should be limited to 35 feet, not stories. Okay? So that, I want to make, I'm gonna emphasize that. So with that being said, we looked at everything. There are a lot of positives. The staff did recommend denial of that due to the building height. And, you know, that came out, and this is a recommendation also for the Publix, the planning commission is not the deciding factor within a PUD. You would make a recommendation to the city council, which there'll be another public hearing if, as it moves forward in six weeks, two months, something along those lines. And that would be the deciding factor. So we did recommend denial with that. Now, the applicant, the next day, did say they think they can fall under the 35 feet. So did send us revised plans for those, only for those four buildings, buildings three through six on the diagram sent. And, you know, this was an example of how that might look. There are some nuances, and I think we've even talked about a few in front of this commission. When you have large lots and measuring the natural elevation, we've allowed folks to use the footprint of the building. I think that could be a solution to get to that 35 feet. However, with some of these long buildings, you can really have a lot of fall. So it may be, and I believe that recommended, that maybe those step down. I think if the, if the buildings fall within 35 feet in a method that we're comfortable with, and the commission doesn't have anything other major issues, we would recommend approval. So there's a couple of choices I think you have tonight. Certainly, the four choices you always have, you can deny it outright with conditions, or recommend, I'm sorry, recommend denial. You can table it for further study. You can make that recommendation with our, to the council, with our conditions of approval, if you will, which I'll show you some if you choose to go that route. Or you can come up with your own conditions. For the staff, we did have some other concerns, so if you want to, if we can get to a solution for the 35 feet, we do recommend approval. And these would be kind of the conditions that we would suggest recommending to the city council. We'd actually like some of these to be resolved before we actually take it to the city council, so we don't have a long list of conditions. But those can be just things added to the PUD or the site plan, or the accompanying master development plan. And I'll read through those conditions. A replat to combine the two lots, so it's all on one lot. Amending some of the uses, so adding some prohibited list of uses such as personal storage. No uses in the dwelling category of our zoning table should be allowed in the commercial spaces. Hotel or motel doesn't fit, a bed and breakfast, nor a boarding house or dormitory. And then we actually want to add one back in, especially when you're trying to create that, and I hate to use this term, but that Main Street feel. Outdoor limited cells can really add some vibrancy to that sidewalks. You know, that's a very limited, you have some plants outside, or some clothes, or things like that. So we want to add that back in, let that be a use any tenants may be do, may be allowed in the future. Condition three is ownership and maintenance of road sidewalks and landscapes will be clarified with MOP or a development agreement. A phasing plan is required, and this, I want to clear it up before we go to the planning commission or the city council, but a phasing plan that prevents all the multifamily residential buildings without commercial. From early on, we did not want to have all the apartments built, and nobody ever gets to the commercial. So we want to see how that's approved. And condition number five will be the applicant will place further use restrictions on the units facing the plaza. I'll touch on that when I finish the list. And then number six, ensure the buildings are under the height limit of 35 feet. And number seven, just change the drainage easement. It should be named stream buffer. I want to touch back on five. I think that, as they designed, there is a plaza proposed here, and whether this is an end unit or the commercial entity takes up the whole space, it would be a shame for something that doesn't utilize a plaza to occupy those end units. So we want to take a look at that and make sure that's not a, I don't know what that would be. I mean, potentially even an office space. I mean, that's your restaurant, that's your brew pubs, that's your, those sort of things that kind of activate that plaza.
Not an office.
Not an office, or, yeah. So with those said, that's kind of our, the height was our concern and why we recommend denial. If they can fall within that, we would recommend approval on this, because we do feel it meets the intent of the comprehensive plan. Everybody's, you know, opposed to apartments, but if we're gonna have them, what you all know, but we're gonna, I'm gonna say for the public, if we're gonna have mixed housing types, they should be in the right location and not just happening haphazardly. With that said, I'll have any questions. Jade Engineering is the applicant, and I believe Paul Marsinko is here with, if there's questions on that. And Ryan Baker, I believe, is also here with Walcott Adams, if y'all have any questions.
So those recommendations you showed at the end, those are your recommendations?
If the building height falls under, the staff recommends approval with those conditions. So lot happened specifically to building height in the last two days, so I'll let the applicant speak to that. But if the buildings meet the 35 feet, we recommend approval. Okay? And I'll kind of move out of the way if you want.
Somebody from the developer would like to speak to this.
Good evening. Excuse me. My name's Paul Marsinko with Jade Consulting. I appreciate Hunter's explanation of the project here. He explained a lot of the items that I wanted to talk about as it related to the comp plan. I believe that we have a project here that really has evolved since the first time we submitted it with what we were proposing. We're excited about this project, think it aligns with the comp plan. Obviously, this area at Old Battles in 98 is a node, as he spoke about, of a mixed-use center. So we're here to answer any questions that you have about anything that he spoke about. And then obviously, the developers here and the architects here to speak about building height as well. So if you have any questions at all, we'd love to talk about it.
Do you have any comment on that building height? Do you want to come up and speak about building height?
Ryan Baker from Walcott Adams-Ronnell. We did the designs of the buildings associated with this, and there, there's a lot to say about the building height. It's not an easy solution in the big picture related to this project. As Hunter said, three stories are allowed. This is a PUD. This is one thing that I love clarity from Hunter. He's talking about 35 feet as a village district. We're not asking it as a village district. This is a PUD, which actually does allow you to have adjusted building heights. You get to define that as part of the PUD, my understanding. Is that correct, Hunter?
So early on, there was conversations about meeting the village standards, and those standards are there. The big one that couldn't meet it in those village standards was a mix of housing types. There's two types, three types of housing required. Technically, there's two types here with the mixed use and apartments. So we try to stay close to those standards as possible, and that's what we're referring to in the, in our recommendation of the 35 feet. If the planning commission sees the, it is a PUD, you do not create a precedent by giving a higher height limit. But, you know, we see projects, a lot of projects, and I always worry about that precedent. Why are we giving exceptions to the rules?
Well, just kind of several things about that. That large longitudinal section through the entire site, when you are at the road at Greeno looking at, it's a one-story, the lot starts, falls down, there's a two-story, the lot continues to fall down. Then the three-story buildings happen beyond that. The two that are more, that are east-west direction are the ones that are really going to be the more challenging to completely, you know, comply 100% to the 35 feet along that entire building with the natural grade. We don't even know what the final grading is going to be, so we might be cut, fill, whatever's going to happen there. We might be five feet above or five feet below when we're done with the cut and fill in that zone. But we can, we definitely foresee stepping those buildings as needed to try to comply. The idea that the new, I don't know which way it goes from here to get to it. At the end here, this 35 feet. So we were, as Turner said, the top was 40-something feet, the top build, the top elevation really was about 39 feet to the mean roof height. This bottom one's about 35 feet to the mean roof height. And our goal is to meet this. I mean, it's try to comply with this general idea. We want to, you know, meet that in general intent, and that's our goal, but we don't really know how we're gonna meet all the points and pieces along the way when we get to that definition of the natural grade versus what the building's going to be. We looked at this with even a flat roof, it was 31 feet tall, it was a flat-roofed building. I don't think anybody wants that. We're trying to meet the character, the developer, we talked early on about character of the development, meeting more of the Point Clear look, feel, it's kind of more of the character of the Grand Hotel and those types of features with the buildings, you know, the spa building over there. And we were trying to, you know, meet that overall character goal. So, you know, shorten the building down, yes, the flat roof, all those kinds of things really does not going to do that. But we feel like, you know, we're getting there. We're not the only three-story complex that is in town or, you know, been approved recently, the new, what's the name of that development?
The Senior Living Center.
The Senior Living Center that, you know, that's right there on Greeno Road, they're three stories.
The Retreat.
Yeah, they're right in front in your face. This is going to be back hidden a lot further away from the road. It's not going to feel, you're not going to get the feeling of this large complex front and center in your face with these buildings. And, you know, our goal is to meet as close to compliance as we possibly can. I mean, that's why we showed this. We want to reduce it down and meet that intent. But I'm just trying to be transparent. I think that's the best thing to do with the all upfront is, you know, meeting all the goals of what Hunter described. This building can be stepped three times, four times, but it's still one building, so I'm not sure how, we have to go through with them to define how that works with individual building when we actually try to meet to comply that. And our thought is, you know, we can recommend approval to the city council with some staff recommendations and back with us on how to meet that compliance of going forward. I think that's the big thing that we're looking to be able to achieve tonight.
And procedurally, I think that is a viable option, as long as by the time we had a site plan, you know, it's clear on the site plan how that's being defined, because one of the things in the cross-section, when you look at it, yes, it's 49 feet. Almost from the, on the elevations, it's from the threshold of the doors, as though things are flat, but as we know, this does fall off. So if you look at the cross-section, that long a building, what is the actual height from the west? So I think, you know, stepping that down, there's some staircases, maybe those can work, and we can work on a, as we have before, on some steeper lots, looking at the footprint of each building and coming up with what that might look like. I think that could work. We've established some finished floor elevations at times on site plans, and then 35 feet above that, that is a viable option for the, to address the building height, and we would be happy to work before we go to council.
I have a couple of questions. Is it okay for me to ask questions now? Can you go back to the slide that's, that kind of gives the overview? I'm looking at, based on some things I've read, the access to Old Battles Village. Let's talk about that.
And can we, just a suggestion, so we don't, maybe open the public hearing, get some of the comments, and then we can bring them back up.
Sure, I just want to know the material. I wanted to know what kind of material that access was.
Have you done elevation shots?
And I'm sorry, we did not put it in.
I just see like a little trail. I don't know anything about that access and just kind of wanted to, so the public knew about what the proposed plan was because of the concerns of connecting to the neighborhood. I just want to get that before we open the Publix so that they can have that information.
And I'd read some of that in the emails that were sent, the concerns about those trees in the back, about that dry drain, which is Point Clear Creek, our impact to that area. So we have the buffer shown that we're not impacting that creek. That pathway that'll go back there to make that connection, which is required by code, obviously will not be a road, that's a boardwalk. So this is a wooden boardwalk that we'd be proposing wide enough for a golf cart or a So, this is a wooden boardwalk that we'd be proposing wide enough for a golf cart or LSV if it's a street-legal vehicle. For anyone who would live back there, who could walk, run, take their dog, take the golf cart through and access to the publics or any of these, these potential restaurants and, and businesses upfront. So, the material, to answer your question, will be wooden boardwalk.
Wooden boardwalk.
Now, is that, that does have a transition as you approach the dog park in those areas, so what would it be in that area?
Certainly, certainly, there'll be areas as you come up to grade. We could make that concrete, it could be asphalt. We've done a development across town where it was an asphalt path, a multi-use path. It could be concrete, but likely asphalt in some areas to make that connection into publics where the dog park is. Just today, we were looking at those areas. The developer's here, he'll be speaking to the owner of publics. We did the publics development as well, and they've already talked, and there'll be, there'll be some coordination to, you know, hammer out those access points and get those legal points of egress and ingress to the site.
So, they're not gonna be mulched? We're not gonna have to worry about it, Washington?
No, no, sir.
And, and as we move to the details of the MOP or something like that, you know, I think the encounter development on the northeast corner of 104181, you know, that was Jade Consulting that designed the paths there. There's a sidewalk on one side of the concrete and then kind of the multimodal path on the, the other side of the road. I think that's a good model where, on the uphill part, more closer in the public parking lot until you hit the boardwalk transition is what, is, if you want a visual representation, that would be the one I would, I think we've kinda discussed where that actually lands.
Second question. I see an access to the north, and I see an access to Greeno. Is there an access to, like, the public shopping center, like, almost it'd be, I guess, right up next to where the new Mexican restaurant is? Is that, is that an access?
Correct. Where, where the main public's entrance is now, it's kind of what publics is known for with their wide-sweeping entrance. That down on the south side that's there, I don't really wanna move this too much.
You put the little mouse right there, I guess, where the little three trees after you come, so that is an access.
Right here, that's right. So, Boulevard entrance into publics here, which will come to a, likely a stop condition, and then, you know, we'll take a right and turn into here. There'll be an easement that'll have to be in place to build that.
Y'all are heading, because you have to have two entrances, that's safety.
Correct. Main entrance up on the north side with the Boulevard as well, it'll match, get the high, the separation for Aldot, and then there'll be a stubout access here as well for future development to the north that we don't control at this time.
There may be, because Wright Boulevard, I believe, is the public's road, because that was done not through the normal subdivision process. Those are private roads, so it may be, and we've discussed this a little bit while we kinda pushed down some of the mates, maybe there's actually an access easement to meet some of the fire codes as it goes across private property. So, that's something we'll have to discuss, but there is two means of ingress and egress for this type of development.
I have other questions and concerns, but I'm, I'm waiting for the, open it up.
Anybody else have any questions? I'll go ahead, public meeting. Anybody from the public like to speak? First, before we start, please, there's a number of you here.
Could you speak up, sir?
Oh, this is annoying, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. There's a number of you here, please keep your comments. If you've heard somebody else say it, please, let's not reiterate it and go over it again because there's a number of you.
Good evening. My name is Gary Gover.
And I'm sorry, one other thing, Gary. When you come up, please give your name and your address.
My, my address is 300th Lincoln Street. Fair hope. The use of terms like multi, multi-purpose, multi, multimodal for these pathways, are there specific specifications or design requirements and so on available for us at this time to understand just exactly what we're gonna construct when we make these things and how they're gonna function depending on the traffic loads and so on, or connections with streets? Questions like, you know, integrating them with proper pedestrian crossings and all that sort of thing? Or are we going to be designing these things and putting out specifications for general use as we develop the town and so on, as we get into this new land comprehensive plan and so on? It seems to me we're pretty vague. I don't understand just what some of these things are gonna do for us.
That's kind of a good point. I mean, it's gonna have to be able to, if you're gonna use it for golf carts, it's gonna have to be able to handle the weight.
Mr. Worsham, I can't.
I'm sorry, if you're gonna be using golf carts, they're gonna have to be designed to handle the weight. How do we?
Absolutely. So, while I can't, I don't wanna answer comp plan questions in a specific case, we are looking at a zoning. So, procedurally, we look at a PUD like this at a higher level, are components being met? There would be a multi-activity, a subdivision process coming later that has those construction details, and that's when we drill into the more specific requirements. That's natural, natural progress, traffic reports, you know, this is the, the zoning, and then later, that, that is ultimately approved by the city council, and then if approved, there would be a follow-up for the MOP that would come and be a planning commission case, and that's where there would be a preliminary and potentially a final process. So, we make sure we're, we're in agreement what those details are, and then they get a chance to go build that, and then it comes back through the planning commission for a closeout to make sure they built it right. So, that, that weight loads, all of those things would have to apply at, at the time of that subdivision case.
But we don't have that now, right?
No, this is the, this is kind of the vision.
Yeah, that's right. This is zoning, okay.
Let me add just one more consideration, and that, that would be the responsibility for the maintenance of these multimodal paths. Is that gonna be comparable to the way we treat streets, or, or is this gonna be a new, new consideration?
One of the conditions states maintenance of sidewalks, roads, trails, and landscape will be handled during the multi-activity project, or because this is a PUD, there is also the option of having a development agreement that spells out any cooperative maintenance or, or other details like that. And we also have a operations and maintenance plan required. On a lot of projects, you see that is only dealing with the drainage. That will certainly be a project, will be a requirement here, but as y'all know, on some other projects, we have had trails, landscape required. So, the owner of this will be maintaining that into perpetuity, and we wanna ensure that that is made to a standard. So, we will be looking at that again during the subdivision case.
Anybody else from the public like to speak?
Yes, Greg Marks, I live on MacArthur Lane, and I can tell you this, with all the rain, pardon me, 655 MacArthur Lane. You know, that is a creek behind our house, it's not a dry bed, and I've seen a lot of water go down there, and with all this parking lot, I wonder what you gonna do about the runoff?
And, and just so everybody knows kind of our procedures here, a, a public hearing is everybody's comments. We'll be making notes of that, and then once the public hearing's closed, we'll address those comments, but under the commission's discretion.
Okay.
So, I won't, I don't, I feel like I'm being stared at, but I won't be having back-and-forth conversation.
We wrote down your question.
Well, yeah, there's gonna be planning runoff.
Yes, sir. We, we will, there is a pond on this that handles that from the parking lot and has to release that. Once we get to the subdivisions, that gets vetted to make sure that's not putting any more water off this property. And, uh, there's post-condition flows and, or post-development flows have to be less than or equal to pre-development.
And my next question is, why would you wanna give all these apartment residents access to our neighborhood?
I can, that's, because that's in our regulations.
Again, I'd advise we go through the public participation and accumulate the list of, and before we continue.
Well, I've heard so far is how we're gonna benefit from it, so we can get to, I mean, get to publics quicker. We're gonna have people walk in our neighborhood, I don't even know.
That's right.
Would you like us to address things?
Yes.
They're public roads, and we do encourage people to use public sidewalks, so, yes, that, that is a.
Are they gonna participate in our HOA?
The, the city maintains the roads.
And what's the chance of us going to gated community?
Zero.
Zero.
It's public streets, we can't close off, but, but again, that has nothing to do with this case.
Yeah, and we're, we're not looking at the subdivision right now. All we're looking at is changing the zoning for this property.
Well, you, you guys said it was a dry creek, it's not a dry creek.
We, we have a, we have a study that says it does. The city is, has sent that out to a third party to evaluate.
You can come to my house next time it rains.
And, and there's an intermittent, the definition is intermittent stream. There is water there when it rains, there is no defined channel, so the requirements on stream protections, as we said, it is a creek by, by definition under FEMA maps. The definitions on buffers on those stream beds are measured from the edge of the banks, and, and that is a low area. There is no defined banks, so.
It's a wetland.
It's a wetland, so I disagree with you. I, I lived there, I, I see it when the rain comes, I see how much goes into the creek.
We have to go by what the, we pay experts to tell us this. None of us, none of us are hydrologists or.
All right, well, I, I, when their, my backyard floods, I'll come see you then.
Hi, my name is Danielle Ingram. I'm acting in agent capacity for my father-in-law, who is 92 years old. He is in Montgomery, unfortunately, but the address is 659 MacArthur Lane. It is, it is exactly where the, the tree lawn meets essentially, so that path would directly affect him. Now, I have a few questions, and it piggybacks off of the, the previous gentleman before me. Now, if, if packages start going missing, and if mail starts going missing, is, is the city willing to expose itself to liability if premises liability becomes an issue? Or would that be something that the apartment complex would be willing to take accountability for?
You're, you're, I'm sorry, I can't really, go ahead.
Yeah, as legal counsel for planning commission, we're not gonna go down whatever hypothetical that is related to potential criminal acts. I mean, that's not before this planning commission's.
Okay, so you would, you would be completely, you know, immune, correct?
Well, I'm not entirely sure I even understand the premise of your question, but.
Okay, we'll move on.
Let's proceed to, to adjust the, the putt.
Okay, yes. So, the strain on water and utilities, as, as you all know, and, I mean, it's, it's at your direct attention that the local water, water system is already operating at redline levels. We all know this. All the people behind me all know this. What, what happens? I mean, really, when, when this apartment complex is built, is, is there a plan in place to, as these nodes that Hunter expressed, I mean, really, as the infrastructure grows, is there, is there an overall plan that, that you can point us to online? We would love some literature. I, I understand that there, you know, there are building projects that have, you know, studies going on, and there, there's, there are little paper packets. Is there something neat that you could, and concise, that you could point us to that would show us the, you know, the, the game plan?
Again, this is, this is not for the subdivision. The subdivision, when it comes up, that, they have to get letters from all of the utilities stating that they are capable of providing those services. That's not part of this, this, what's going on right here.
Okay. Okay, I'll, I'll take that as some, some sort of an answer. As, as the gentleman behind me pointed out earlier, there are, you know, there are larger buildings being built, you know, so I guess they would just fall in behind this. My pushback on that is, I'm a mother, I have children in the Baldwin County schools, they will eventually be going to high school and middle school, middle school and high school in these areas. Bigger buildings means safety concerns for parents. I mean, this is within a, what, a mile, a mile and a half radius of, of the middle school and the high school? Is there, is there any pushback on maybe the height requirement should, there, there shouldn't be an exception made for that? I, I implore you and I urge you to have them stay under, under the 35 feet that Hunter was talking about for safety concerns, for mothers, for fathers. You know, this, this is going to lead to increased traffic and congestion in the area. If, if you're on Manly, or if you're on Twin Beach or Greeno in the mornings, you know, law-abiding citizens going to work to and from, you know that, that it's, it's already a crazy traffic area. Is there a plan in place for, for school traffic?
When it goes for the subdivision, that there has to be, there'll probably have to be a traffic study done for this, right, Hunter?
Okay. I think maybe the traffic study should have preceded the study for, you know, all else.
All we're doing is rezoning the property. We are not approving the subdivision. So, the, it, it cannot be built, just to clarify, as we talk about these procedural things, just in plain language, it can't be built until that subdivision happens and all of those things are vetted. This is, a zoning is a little bit more about the uses. We happen to be tying some appearance and aesthetics and landscape things in a, at a very high level. That does not give the final word to go build everything without addressing all the pragmatic things that are required in other regulations within, within the city. And I will point out, all this commission does is rec, make a recommendation to the city council. This will go before the city, this rezoning will go before the city council if we, whatever we recommend.
Well, I, I urge you to, to encourage them to, you know, make a plan before these types of, before growth plans are made. Also, you know, the, the cut-through, I, I understand he can't, he can't answer my hypotheticals, but, you know, there, there has to be, there has to be some sort of understanding that this is going to affect this neighborhood directly. I, I encourage you, if, if at all possible, to, maybe to, to rezone the, the bike path, the, I, I don't know, I, is, is that a possibility? I couldn't really understand from the information Hunter was providing, if there is an alternate route that could be proposed to the.
So, and, and I'll, I'll talk in general a little bit, because we have the benefit of sitting in these meetings at least once a month and looking at developments, and y'all know this, and a lot of folks, it's their first time. This is the concern for a lot of development, a lot of neighbors. When Old Battles Village was done, there was a group of folks here in Huntington Woods that sat in this room and said, "We don't know those people. They're not gonna, you know, how do we know that?" The, I mean, and not to devolve into.
Lee Turner had to recuse himself.
Well.
Are you talking about the builders?
No, Huntington Woods was the first phase of Old Battles Village. So, it started out as a master plan development, and it is abutting Greeno Road and was the first phase built. Every subsequent phase of Old Battles. Every subsequent phase of Old Battles Village was built. And even the fifth phase, I think, when we were in this meeting, we had a room full of folks that say, "Stop this." You know, "They're gonna be in our neighborhood." This was planned as a master development from long ago. And I remember specifically, our realtor told us that was gonna be a farm field forever. It, it, it was known, um, the counterargument is, what happens if somebody from Old Battles Village steals a package from the apartments? I mean, that, we can't devolve into those type arguments, but I do acknowledge it's always a concern. And connectivity between those is something that is upheld, and it's nation, I mean, it's nationwide, those are critical components. We do not, and have a longstanding requirement to not have gated communities, stub streets, cul-de-sacs. That is what causes urban sprawl that we have done well at, that you see really challenging a lot of other cities as they grow. So, there, there's, there's a big component that we have the benefit of many years of, you know, conversation on that's, that's new to some folks, so, uh, just.
Okay, well, I just, I urge you that if, if there is a potential other cut through, that, that doesn't affect Battles Village, that you would highly consider it. Also, I'll, I'll finish with, uh, you know, I've, I've, I've done a little bit of research on Mr. Corbett, the property owner that is, that is requesting, um, by S-Cor USA, he, he owns it. He has a one, one-star rating.
That, 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 we're not, we don't discuss that here, that's.
Okay.
Why not?
Because we're just evaluating whether or not to rezon this property.
So, your commission is willing to back up our environmental concerns and answer those, but.
We're not at that point.
No, let, let me answer that real quick. The applicant was required to do an environmental study by a licensed evaluator, biologist. Not only did they do that, the city hired with our own money to make sure, because this is a unique situation and we are concerned about the drainage, those sort of things, our own, and that is a licensed, um, Gina Todia, that report, um, is, uh, going to, uh, and, and she did confirm those things. So, I mean, it's done, the due diligence has been done and by licensed people regardless of, um, what, it doesn't, and that's the environmental assessment. That's not a drainage assessment, that's not a floodway, nobody's building in a floodway, nobody's doing anything there, so.
Was an assessment done on the, on the, on the property owner and his, his, you know, previous investments?
No, as legal counsel for Planning Commission, the, the city does not do, the, the city cannot pick or choose its property owners and their development rights based on their history or their past performance. That's not something that's before, the Planning Commission at this time, we're simply talking about the request to zone this property as a planned unit development or a PUD.
Also, can I get the name or the company of the, the third party that, that did the, uh, uh, the environmental studies?
I believe that is in the staff report for the, the environmental assessment. If not, um, an email to the planning, planning@fairhopeal.gov can, we can make those requests.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Cassie Bates, I'm the staff scientist at Mobile Baykeeper. Our office is located at four fifty C Government Street in Mobile. Um, I wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to be able to come and speak today, uh, about the planned development or rezoning related to the planned development, um, for this Legends at Point Clear. Um, I wanted to make a couple of observations and comments. The first one being that there was no wetland delineation map provided to the public, um, with overlay of the development schematic. It is good to know that there was a third-party consultant that, uh, performed a review of this area and the, uh, wetlands that may be on site, uh, but we do request for a map to be provided to the public with that information. There are hydric or loamy soils present on the property according to the Natural Resources Conservation Service Soil Mapper. There are beauty berry bushes at the southern border of the property which are indicative plant species of, uh, wetland-associated habitats. Uh, this is near the headwaters of Point Clear Creek. And it is good to see that there is an environmental feature buffer area that's provided in this schematic. Um, we do not advocate for what, any kind of paved roadway access, um, over this creek area to create connectivity between Old Battles Village and the proposed development site, um, outside of opportunities for what has been provided, which is the low-impact boardwalk access. The Fish and Wildlife, uh, Wetland Mapper does show that wetlands do exist east of the creek and likely do exist in other portions of the property, that this development is, uh, overlaid with the parcel. Uh, we do recommend that the buffer area be placed into a conservation easement so that this area be preserved and protected more formally into the future. There's very little wooded area that exists bordering Point Clear Creek as it moves downstream, which is important for prevention of stormwater erosion and in-stream siltation. Zoning ordinances are important, um, to be standardized, especially in, uh, currently unzoned areas. Uh, however, if the comprehensive plan currently suggests not putting high-density development in parcels such as this, continuing to restructure development density around new nodes that continue to pop up will continue leading to further encroachment of waterway and wetland resources in Baldwin County. It is important to incorporate areas of ecological and environmental relief as nodes will continue to pop up at accelerating rates in Baldwin County. Baldwin County is one of the fastest-growing counties in the state, so we request that the city not approve rezoning until these resources that I asked for, including wetland delineation map with the overlay of the area, be provided to the public to review, um, and consideration of implementing a conservation easement in that buffer area. We would like for the rezoning to be considered, uh, again, with those resources provided to the public. Thank you very much.
There's a lot there, can I go ahead and answer that?
Yeah.
Okay, just, and I'm sorry, I know we're, that, that was a lot, and, and very, very well-spoken and good points. The, I'm gonna hit this, so there were two assessments done. And one was Eco Solution is the name of the company, and Wetland Resources Environmental Consulting was the second one that the city hired out. There is no map because there is no wetlands. There, 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 both said there are no wetlands on this property. The only way we would have a wetland, uh, map would be if there were wetlands on the property. I don't know the details why those two environmentalists said there's no wetlands there, but, but that has been done and is, is vetted. And anyone that would like to see those, submit a public records quest to the city clerk of Fairhope, Alabama, and we will get those.
Thank you.
The soil maps are a broad national map and the environmentalists typically are going into looking at the site specifically to look at that. That, that was done, that's why we required the, uh, wetland assessment or the wetland delineation. The conservation easement, that, we, we've attempted to do that and, and I won't use the names of, of any cons. We, we've met with a lot of the conservation groups, because we do like that idea. Um, as y'all know, in the, the comp plan, we've, we've envisioned greenways and things like that. And one of the ways we envisioned doing that was as these developments come along, put those areas such as this within conservation easements. And over time, you have a protected greenway. Many of the conservation groups will not put them into conservation easements, not because of the commercial development, but usually because of a residential development such as Old Battles Village. Those narrow conservation easements by a subdivision like that is a policing problem for them. Their invest, their, their goals are more targeted to larger lots, not a small portion here that might be two-point-four acres that causes more policing effort than it does for the easement. So, number one, we can't require the conservation easement, that was vetted, um, in a previous PUD, I believe in Montrose. And if we could, we don't, we haven't found anyone to take those. You know, so that, that's, that's not, nothing to do with the zoning. The buffer is there, it's a stream buffer, not a wetland buffer, a, and it is to protect that drainage area, but there was no flora involved according to, to delineations. So, the, that, the components of a wetland, you know, the flora is, is one of those. I hope that answered all the questions.
Thank you, I, I do understand that it's difficult, um.
Could you come back up to the microphone, please?
Yeah, sorry, uh, thank you, I do understand, um, we have heard before that it's difficult for some groups to put areas into conservation easements based on the size and also, um, based off of the current quality of existing, uh, wetland habitat that is there. But Mobile Baykeeper does want to work to make that become more feasible and accessible for developers. So, that's not such a hurdle or a non-starter. Um, and so if the developers are interested in having more conversations about that, especially if this developer plans to continue, um, developing in Baldwin County and there are more streams and, uh, wetlands associated with, uh, parcels of land in which developments are planned to take place, we would really like to collaboratively discuss how that could become an option in the future, just putting that out on the table. Thank you.
Treasure Adams, also Mobile Baykeeper, four fifty Government Street, I'm the community organizer. And I was just curious if there was a way that we could get the schematics of this plan more easily accessible to the public. I called the commission today and was kinda sent on a wild goose chase, they told me to call Daphne, then they told me to call the county, the county told me to call Fairhope. So, finding the schematics of this plan was just, it seems a little difficult and I was wondering if there's a way that we can make that, um, more accessible for the public.
And I'm not sure which commission you called, these planning commissioners are all volunteers, they don't have a phone number. So, if it was Baldwin County Commission, they probably didn't know what was going on. But all the plans and packets are on our website under, um, I believe it's Government Link, Planning Commission, and there's a packet for each month.
And I will point, this again is just a zoning request, it's not the subdivision request, a subdivision request will have all of those drawings in it.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And, and there is information.
There is information, but it's not.
That's just this case, so there's.
It's not complete.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Pat Gallagher and I live at six one seven Sharpsburg Avenue. And I'm just trying to take in the proceedings and understand the process, but, um, if this is a rezoning request, it, it sounded like we are assuming that it was, uh, appropriate for apartments to go in. So, I would like to discuss why we feel that that is, um, a given. Because I've just, I moved here about three years ago from an area that, uh, heavily built apartments over ten years and greatly changed the landscape of the town. And I feel that that should be done wisely, we need apartments, we need multi-use, um, residential areas, but we put in several apartments nearby and I know y'all probably hear about this all the time, but why are we assuming that apartments are appropriate in this space? Why aren't we looking into having, um, more of a, a business complex with the town center, uh, and restaurants? And that would be a lovely addition, but why apartments? Um, and I would like to go on record as saying, I absolutely oppose apartments in that spot. I think townhomes, something that people own, but, um, I've seen, I've seen horrible things where we, where places have over-built apartments and, um, I just don't feel it's appropriate for here.
Jan Hinton, five seven seven Musket Avenue, Old Battles Village. I would like to go on record by saying that we have a beautiful neighborhood, this is a lovely area. And I too do not believe that the proper zoning is for apartments. I would much rather have a business there than an apartment complex. We are surrounded by apartments, what are you doing? Please think about this, let's get some more businesses down here, I don't wanna see another apartment complex, thank you.
I'm Amanda Cushman, I'm at seven eight seven eight A, Pale Moon Court. Can I use this mouse to show where I live? Here we go, if you can look up here, we are the landowners north, so this strip here. Okay, um, so we've lived here for over twenty years and you could kinda say that we've kinda done our own environmental study just living here for so long. It is not a dry creek bed, and I can tell you that because we kayak there when it rains, um, and have for years, my children have. It floods extensively, to the point when we've had hurricanes and our land in the back, which is right here too, when we have put, um, down trees and just moved them to the back to kinda get them out of the way, and I'm talking about hundred-year-old oak trees, large live oak trees that were lost during hurricanes, um, it washed them away. The water is so strong back there. If you go back there when it does rain, even pretty heavily, and I'm not talking about a hundred-year rain, I'm talking about every couple of month rain, a heavy rain, it will knock you down and kill you, it will drown you. So, when they say that they're going to develop a walkway, a wooden board walkway here, it is not feasible. There's no way, whoever is on that walkway will not be here tomorrow, or there tomorrow. So, I wanted to let y'all know that, I don't know who did this environmental study. Yeah, so, that's part of it. Another thing we were talking about, and also, you know, the wildlife, because supposedly it's not, you know, wetlands, but there's heron back there and I, I've never heard of heron being in an area that's not wetlands, but, okay. And so, also, you know, other animals and wildlife that exist there. This is, it's full of, you know, every kind of animal you can imagine, ecologically, we're talking about, you know, barn owls, every kind of hawk, every kind of turtle, I mean, the turtles that come out of those woods from, uh, you know, the, the box turtle to the gopher turtles, they're, they're there. So, when they did the environmental study, did they look at those also, like the amount of animals that inhabit that and have for many years? Also, the green space, so they're saying that they're going to leave a buffer zone and this is also kind of a buffer zone, but the developer currently, when you walk along this line here, they have marked all these trees to, um, to clear it. So, the trees are marked all the way back here too. So, this has already been marked for clearing and it's been marked all the way to the corner because we go back there all the time and the trees are marked. The person who marked the trees came to spoke and spoke to me. I was out in the yard and he walked out of the woods and he was marking trees, he let me know who he was because he was literally a few feet from my door and he's marking those trees because I live right here. And they are marking all of these trees. So, we will have no. So, we will have no trees there, no buffer zone. So, you've talked about buffer zone here. What is the buffer zone here, since they've marked all of the trees except for those that are 20 inches or larger? Um, and he said those were the trees that will be cleared. Not only that, he's come up and he's marked on this side, which doesn't belong to us, all the trees along here to be cleared by the future development that's also going in here, which we haven't gotten to yet. This is not for rezoning. I'm just, you know, I was just going to say, they're marked all the way, so they're already marked to be cleared, and they're marked all the way to the back.
That doesn't have anything to do with what we're talking about.
Okay, I was just wondering.
And, and there is a regulation, so before any application comes in, and again, not the property up there, nothing to do with this case.
Yeah.
But there is a survey and, and 20 inches, or is it, that, that actually makes sense. Heritage trees are defined in the City of Fair, on any business property that is protected, and they have to survey every tree that's out there, and they will mark those. A lot of times, uh, now, when we get the subdivision case, an applicant proposes some to remove, and we'll see what they're proposed, and we get a chance to say, no, don't remove those. Okay, those are, and then they have to supplant at a credit-based ratio anything that is removed. Now, this is a wooded site.
Right.
You know there has to be some, but, but we tr, we strive to try to keep as many of those heritage trees.
But I see this green space. It almost looks like the woods have been preserved here, but they've marked all the trees to clear.
But, a lot of times, people mistake those might be the marks of the heritage trees. I, I don't, I don't know.
I don't know. I'm just getting this from the person who marked them. I, I don't know. Um, and so, anyway, so my question is here, this is our property, so we won't have any woods here, so this is all woods, and so, you know, you're saying that they're saving woods here so that you have a buffer zone for the people in the back. What about us? What about us? Because we own all this.
Again, that will be in the subdivision.
Would there be a buffer zone there?
There has to be a buffer zone.
Okay, and a buffer zone would mean trees, the original trees there, or is a buffer zone just they level it and it's a few feet away from the parking lot?
Hunter, with the, there's regulations on what the buffer zone has to be.
Do you know the regulations?
No. Hunter.
Yes, there, uh, we already said what they were, but for repetition, that was, there's three choices in the, there's different buffers zones, okay? So, in this particular case, one of the minimal requirements, when you have, um, land uses that are not, you know, don't, don't jive well, residential and commercial, um, there is a buffer zone required. There's a dimensional requirement, this is what I, did I get it right the first time?
Yes.
Okay. So, a 10-foot strip that has a fence and a one row of shrubs, two rows of shrubs, or a 20-foot wide kind of impenetrable buffer. Um, it is a PUD, so the planning commission can require more if needed. I believe along most of that property, it's a 30-foot. Now, when we get to the subdivisions, that's when we'll review, all right, let's keep as many existing trees as possible, and, and then supplant with new plantings.
Because bushes, I mean, it's, you know, when you have three stories hovering over you in this area, or three stories hovering here, and this is leveled, you see the three stories. So, if you leave the trees, if you leave 30 feet of trees, it kind of blocks that. But if you give me rose bushes, then it doesn't.
And, and one of the things that makes it difficult, again, at this high level, this is a, kind of the concept, um, grading plans are required, and that's when you start looking at, at what is, is being proposed to remove. So, the first step, if, if this is approved, the engineer will go out and do a grading plan, and they're going to propose, we want to cut these trees down, and then we're going to review it and say, we want you to save these, and there's, there's a little bit of a back and forth before we come to a, the planning commission, and then the planning commission can have a review of that, along with comments in the public hearing at that time.
And so, we can make sure that those engineers are just as well-educated and versed as the environmental study person is too. Yeah. So, okay, the next, the last thing is, so whenever you do this, it looks like you've got, is this like a retention pond? Is that what this is?
It is a pond.
It's a retention pond, okay. So, on a retention pond, you've got water in this, and she was saying, I think, the baykeeper was saying it was a headway. Um, I know that from living there for over 20 years, that water, um, comes into the property from three different directions. So, it comes in here, it comes in here, and it comes in here, and it all flows here. So, that's where you see that it flows very quickly and very fast, and it floods very quickly. And when I'm talking about quickly, I'm talking about, think of an extreme flash flood, that you couldn't go send anybody out because it would, you know, it's dangerous. So, whenever you have, what are you going to do? Are, you think that that's going to stop all that? It's going to fill up? But the problem is, if you block any of that coming, because you're blocking it, right, from three different directions here, it's going to flood somewhere. And I would imagine it's going to flood right here, because that's where we've seen it in the past. Uh, but it floods, it goes away. But if you block it, it's not going to go away. It's going to stay.
Okay. Part of the subdivision regulations require that a study of the water flow has to be done.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I am Carrie Talke.
Peter Talke.
And we are at 663 MacArthur. Our home is directly, well, about one up of the proposed trail, so as you can, as you can see that we're kind of concerned about, um, this project and how it will affect our property values as well as our neighbors. Um, one thing I do want to kind of just ask a little question on, according to the Baldwin County parcel viewer, we do have a proposed wetlands that goes over the backside of this proposed project into some of our, um, homes here. You can see with the layer over here, kind of what it highlights on. So, there is potential wetlands there, just to kind of echo those concerns, because I know in a lot of cases, when we do buildings in Baldwin County, we have to adhere to like limo and the movement of water when we build on a coastal, um, barriers or coastal water lanes. And I'm wondering, just to kind of echo, when we do a project like this and we obstruct the movement of the water, where is it going to go? It's not going to go into that retention pond, it's going to go into my backyard, into that nice lady's property, and then we do have the flooding. So, that was my concern on the wetlands. And I wanted to kind of clarify and ask, with this proposed buffering of the woods, how deep is it going to be from this project to MacArthur? Because that's my backyard. So, is somebody going to be able to walk from the apartments into my backyard? Is there going to be some sort of fence in front of this wooded area? Like, what kind of protection are we going to have from people who are going to be able to just walk into our backyards? So, you know, we have children, and we have people who play in the backyards, and there's no fencing, so how does that affect us? So, my big question is, what is the depth of that wooded area? How does it affect all the livestock that's back there, the birds, um, the wetlands and everything? So, those are my concerns.
I think as part of what, again, this, that's all going to be addressed in the subdivision, and, but then, from what, as far as this, the buffer on that western side is roughly 275 feet from the buildings to your subdivision.
So, we're not going to be taking down any of the trees, like?
Um, I, that's, again, is done during the subdivision.
Okay, and that was one of the questions that I wanted to ask, and probably in front of everybody else here too, is, when is it going to be appropriate for us to ask those tough questions to get the answers that we're looking for? I know right now it's just the zoning, but at what point in time can we, should we write a letter to you all? Should we come back to another meeting? When is that time?
Just by way of reference for the procedure, for everybody, um, tonight, the PUD is proposed, and the planning commission does not make the decision to approve or deny the PUD. The planning commission simply makes a recommendation that the city council will have another public hearing, you have the opportunity to raise questions and issues about the PUD at council meeting, which, based on timing and notice and that sort of thing, will probably be within the next two months.
Okay.
If it is approved, the next stage would be for what's called a multiple occupancy project under the subdivision regulations. That is when the developer with its engineers submit certified plans stamped by their engineer, a civil engineer of the drainage issues, the, the drawing and the construction details of the buffers, the details in the tree preservation plan. All of that is part of the multiple occupancy review project. If we get to that stage, that would come before the planning commission, there would be another public hearing, there would be, just like this packet, information put out to the public before that meeting, and the, uh, public would have the opportunity to come in again, excuse me, speak your concerns, raise your questions, and at that time, you'd have the actual documents showing some of these plans, that you could raise questions, and then the planning commission and staff can more appropriately and, and with more education on what specifically is being proposed and the drawing supporting it, have that discussion with the public.
Will we be notified? I, I mean, or do y'all prefer us to send letters, or to come to these meetings, or how do you guys want us to communicate with your concerns?
Any way that you feel most comfortable doing.
Okay.
So, what, what about these packets you're saying? We, I think it's packaged before the next meeting.
And just, I know, we're not going to cross-talk, but just what I mean was, when the planning commission has a case, the information is put out, it's all available and accessible to the public through the, the website. Certainly, you can follow up with the staff and get requests as well. The packet I was referring to, the planning commission gets a packet of all the details of the documents, but that's also published on the city's website.
Like this package.
Prior to every meeting, exactly.
Along with your emails, all your emails that y'all got.
Yes, I saw some of the emails, and I did address those.
They're here. They, they put them in there.
Yeah, they did. And we, and I think we all are just really concerned, as you guys probably hear this time and time again, you know, for our homes, our property values, our children, but we also understand that urban sprawl happens, but we want to find a happy medium. When I hear the gentleman from Walcott Adam and say, we're pushing this back, we're pushing this back from 91, you're pushing it back into my backyard, it's all of my friends' backyard. So, that's what we're concerned about, the heights. We know that it's 35 feet, but we don't want to have to look into these big buildings when we purchased these lots for the wooded areas, and, you know, it's just taking away our property values and what we feel in our sense of security and, you know, our privacy, and what we feel like we bought into when we purchased our home here.
I do want to mention one thing to, to make sure, when the subdivision happens, because of a unique situation, um, in Old Battles Village, you actually, there's a common area strip of, of 30 feet that the HOA owns.
The common area, yeah.
Between your backyard and this property.
Yeah, it's right here. Yes.
That, under state statute, when the subdivision case happens, we send letters out to adjacent property owners because of, and that has to be as, the addresses as by the tax assessor's office. So, we will send those letters out. We're required by state statute to get that. And unlike this case, which sent letters out to three, three people within 300 feet of the property, it will only be to adjacent property owners. The only notification will go to whoever is on the HOA document. So, please tell whoever manages your HOA to be on the lookout for that. And y'all talk amongst yourselves, we are in no way, shape, or form hiding that, encourage you all to come to those meetings when we have them. But just, that's a legal, that's kind of a notification requirement, and because of that, it, we have seen sometimes where the HOA management might be a third party somewhere else and does not forward that. But we're also, our agendas are, are published in the same place, you can check each month if there's anything on this project, so. And, or you can always call us. It, it certainly wouldn't be back in front of this body if approved by the, um, like I said, it's, it's probably a six weeks, two-month window if you move it forward tonight before it will be on city council. So, this is kind of a lengthy process, but you can always call our office to see if there's any updates.
Okay, and I, I will point out too, that typically our meetings are on Monday nights, and we get our packages on the commission either the Wednesday or Thursday before that Monday night. So, it should be.
Weird when this with Labor Day and a Thursday meeting, it's a little odd.
And Hunter, I want to ask and go back to the limo. Do you think that applies in this situation, knowing that there is moving water in the adjacent properties? Is that something that would be considered in this development?
I'm hesitant to say about a specific limo. I thought that was coastal, directly coastal properties. I know where that, that, the line that shows up on the county map.
Yeah.
Um, that's usually where it is. I don't.
It doesn't go.
I don't think a limo line would, would show up on a, on a intermittent streambed.
So, there's no other equivalent restrictions with moving water as far as development would go?
So, let, let me clarify one step. Um, the, what, the environmental assessment done was a wetland delineation. Now, there are other concerns. Are there flood plans on the property? What can be done with those? Are there drainage plans? All of those are, there, there's a, there's a clarification when we're talking about environmental assessments, a wetland delineation done to, to see if there was any non-jurisdictional wetlands, which means, is there anything within our regulations or a jurisdictional wetlands under the review of the Corps of Engineers or, in certain cases, even ADEM? So, that's what was not done. The engineer will deal with the floodways and drainage at the time of that subdivision case.
So, did you say that Gina was the third party who did this, Gina Tova? Did she take in consideration the potential wetlands when she looked at it?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, and to reference the map that you're holding there, the layer that's on the Baldwin County, um, that is, has lots of errors on that, that's why it's only a potential wetland.
Yeah.
If, if you do go to that same website and you look at the Publix parking lot, it will show you that that is a potential wetland there as well.
Yeah.
It is a very large area that is an indicator to look further.
Probably fluid.
And then a wetland, then a wetland delineation is done at that point to help determine that.
And we look at many different resources to determine if a wetland's a core. That potential wetlands layer, the national soil, if there's any hydroic soils on that map, the FEMA flood maps, there's, there's a lot, and that's when we require the wetland delineation even at a, at a zoning case.
Do you think FEMA's more accurate then?
Uh, national maps tend to aggregate a lot of data and make some assumptions. They have to. They can't go measure every square inch. That's why feet on the ground is what we require in a situation like this, someone that actually knows what they're looking for.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, you know, I, I'd like to vote to veto this plan. I think it's a disaster. Uh, you know, environmental stuff, we've done it before, but let me bring up one thing too, that I see every day. I go to Publix every day. I go get breakfast there, whatever, I drive over there. So, how do people get from this complex, they call it a large complex, to Greeno Road North? They have to go down to Old Battles Road, correct?
No, there's an entrance on Greeno Road.
At the, at the north end.
So, the crossover to go north?
The north end of the, can we get to the slide?
It's, it's not a traffic light though, right?
If you look at the, there's a.
Not at this time.
No.
But there'll be a traffic study if, if this was approved.
There is up on the, on the northeast corner.
So, we're going to put a traffic light, like, less than a quarter mile away from Old Battles Road?
There's two entrances to Greeno, one on this property and one just.
To the south. Through the Publix that would utilize the existing Publix entrance.
And I think that this entrance is, they put it there because that's where Aldoc told them to put it.
So, they're only going to be able to enter in on the street side of?
No.
How would they get in?
There's an entrance at, on the northeast corner on Greeno Road.
Let me see if I can, if everybody can see, there's an entrance here.
Yeah, of course.
From Greeno Road, and then one here.
Yeah, and that's the one to go to Publix. So, the question is, right now, based upon this, the people that leave there, there's 131, uh, apartments there, so figure about 200 cars. So, I go to Publix in the morning, and so for them to get out to go north right now, they have to go through by that new Mexican restaurant and out to Old Battles Road, catch the light. So, we know that from that light to that exit of Publix on that side by Old Battles, it's maybe three or four car lengths long. So, if it's 7:00 in the morning, these people are going to go scooting down past that Mexican restaurant, there could be a backup there just to get onto Greeno Road North. It's, it's horrible to me.
Again, the subdivision, uh, analysis will, will have to include a traffic study.
Yeah, and of course, but to me, it's a disaster in waiting, and, you know, and I, I think the plan was basically a bad sell, and to have the path through is just to help the people that are putting businesses there, where they go, hey, the people from Old Battles can walk through to your restaurant. I'm a salesperson, I've known, that's a, it's a, it's a bad technique, and I, I get what they're trying to do, but it, it's quite bogus. Uh, to me, so, to rezone it, I say no. Veto on it, for sure.
Even as a business. Or a public square?
Do a gas station while we have gas.
No, not a gas station, no.
Do, do, do a restaurant.
No, a public square, we don't want a gas station.
Three minutes.
Right now, it can be a lot of things. If you take a look at our use table of B2, it can be quite a lot of things.
But, but I do, I.
That's not, we don't mind.
Something else, the buffer could be closer to our home, so I do want to make sure that it's not going to be like those backwoods are preserved for, for our homes and our safety and our property values, that whatever goes in here, it's not 10.
Thank you. That's all I got.
Just say no.
Do we have anybody else?
Anybody else from the public like to speak? I'll go ahead and close the public meeting. Commissioners, any questions of Hunter or the developer? Hunter, you have anything to add or?
I do have a question for, for the engineering firm. I know there's a grading plan coming, but it, would it be possible before the city council meeting to at least say, hey, there's a limit here of where we know we will not be graded? Just to show where the, is there an area where you can say definitively the trees are not being removed? That we can give a little bit of guidance before the subdivision case?
Yeah, I believe, excuse me, let me try. There we go. This one's colorful and pretty. This one here shows the, the stream bank that runs through there. There's 50 feet on either side of that. We will not be impacting that at all. That area will, will remain wooded. I know there was some discussion about trees being flagged for removal. That those trees are being flagged to pick up the data of where they are and when, what they are, what the species is and what the size is. We spent some time to look at this and provide, you know, small details on the site. I don't want to go into the minute details in this case here, but upfront, to find these trees, the heritage trees, the ones that are on site that aren't in the middle of a building, to be able to move a sidewalk around it or adjust the parking to avoid that. But to answer Hunter's question, that buffer in the rear that runs to the stream will not be impacted. Everything to the west of that is, will not be impacted either, other than the, the building of that boardwalk. The detention pond that's shown there, very likely a wet pond. There was some discussion about, about kayaking, there was some discussion about trees being placed into this creek. That pond itself is not within the creek. That's the difference between the buffer and the detention pond. So there was some discussion about that pond being built and backing up water on, on another property. Those are two separate things. So the creek is one thing, the pond is another thing. So if the pond's being built and graded, that yes, those trees will be removed in that area, which is this area directly behind the buildings. But this area here, this 50 feet either side, as well as this triangular area there, they're all, they're all wooded areas. We have no desire to cut down trees along this buffer on the north side just to replant them. If there is some grading that needs to be done, some of these trees, yes, will be removed. But any tree directly on the property line that may straddle the property line to the property owner to the north, we would not be cutting those trees down. Obviously not cutting trees down on neighboring properties. And any tree that we'd cut down that would be on our property, we'd have to replant for a buffer. So I hope that answers the question of the areas that we will do everything we can to save, and we've already done some on the front end to save or to plan to save some of those across the site.
The public meeting has been closed. Again, you will have another opportunity, well, you've got two more opportunities possibly with this, with the city commission and if there's, if we, subdivision.
And to be clear, whether the planning commission recommends approval or denial, it will go before the city council. So just to state that, you know, your recommendation for denial would still go to city council for final decision and they could agree with you or rule differently. And likewise, you could recommend approval and vice versa.
Are you ready for a recommendation? I recommend CZ 2402 be denied by staff's recommendations.
Do I have a second?
Wait a minute. So our recommendation, in fact, it was denial.
Right.
If you choose to make a motion on that, I'm asking you to state the reason. And then if the 30-foot height.
If y'all are okay with that, then it was a recommendation of approval with the conditions.
Yeah, I just.
You want my stack?
You have to give a reason.
My reason is for your, from your staff recommendations and, and I like your options of the regarding allowable commercial use to change that and give other options.
If you, if you go, if you recommend denial, it's gonna, you have to give the reason you are denying it.
Staff's recommendations of denial was for the, how, height allowance.
But, but they've revised their recommendations, as you see on the screen now, to an approval with these conditions.
With those conditions.
So their denial is over, has been overcome by events.
Okay, so then I can deny it based on?
The height.
That's what I said, was the height?
You said staff recommendations, you did.
Okay, with removing of the staff recommendations of the height. And also I could say, because we've changed it.
Well, the planning commission, I mean, planning department changed their recommendation from denial to approval with this revised set of recommendations, or conditions rather.
Because you're denying it because of height.
It's, and it's on your screen.
Right, well, okay.
So it can't be because of height, because they all fit to meet the height.
I can say because of drainage.
Well, that.
We don't have that.
If there's not a second.
Not a second, then the motion would die. I mean, she can, as the planning commission.
I can deny it because I want to deny it.
Okay, well, state, if you're entitled to make whatever motion you feel appropriate. But what I would ask is, you make a motion and you state the reasons disregarding what staff says, state the reasons for why you're making a motion to deny it.
Okay, I make a motion to, for ZC 2402 to be denied based on impact of the community and welfare of the community.
Do I have a second? No second, the motion doesn't pass.
So.
Y'all are pitiful.
Is there a different motion?
Do we have another motion?
I move to approve case.
No, we, we recommend approval to the city council.
I'm sorry. I recommend that we recommend to city council approval of ZC 24.02, what's it called? The rezoning of the property from B2 to, to a, to a PUD, Planned Unit Development, to be known as Legends at Point Clear, subject to the staff recommendations, or staff conditions, rather.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Any further business, anybody?
You have to adjourn us. You have to adjourn us.
Somebody has to make a motion.
I made a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
I get to.